My pleasure to be here today in the United States of America, in two republics which stands one nation under the individual, representative justice for our.
Do you have a roll call?
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jelker.
Here.
Alderman Wolfen.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Eric Bofflon.
Very good. For approval of the agenda?
Tell me, Carter, do we have to approve it before I ask amended? Or? Has amended? I would like to see if we could move bill forty-three twenty-three to vote in front of forty-three twenty-two. Basically just flip-flop them around. I didn't know what the numbers that that would matter. Or I'd like the motion to do that, whatever I gotta say.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Very good. It's okay with you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So I make the motion to approve as amended?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Takes us down to Martin's report.
Okay, if you haven't been by Chadwell Lane here recently, you should go by there and take a look at this improvement. It is a remarkable improvement.
To say the least.
The concrete work should have finished today. They'll be paving Monday. Dan called me and said, you know, I'd rather do it than just get it all done in one day. And so I said, well, make sure you contact the nursing home, you contact the doing center and make sure that schedules were coordinated, so there's not a problem. I guess you heard from him? Did you hear from him?
Yes.
Okay. And they are following through with scheduling. Scheduling it. Park board meeting had a spirited discussion. Alderman Rainey was there and they were deciding what to do at the end of the year and made decisions and it's an interesting kind of new dynamic on that on that board.
What sort of decision?
Pardon me? What trees to put where, that kind of thing. They said they're gonna buy trees, now where are they gonna put them and where? John Carl, who's now on the board, you know, has a long history of park service and a lot of knowledge about tree species and where they should be and it's trees a treat to me, but apparently not.
Hey, hey, watch it. And uh...
What about that disc golf stuff, either stuff in the works for that?
That's, yeah, that's already...
Oh, that's done?
Well, yes. The order has been placed.
Okay.
And uh... That's where the contractor agreed to donate the labor if the park board spent seventeen hundred dollars in material cost. Not just the labor, labor and forms and tools needed. Yeah, he's, he's... I talked to him, I found it so unbelievable I had to call him. Is this right? Yep, it's right, I'm doing it, okay. The chamber and Dina's here, has had this leadership program, Mark participated in it.
Did you pass?
Good reports, they had a commencement and the mayor and I kind of attended the commencement and and I understand from Dina at that commencement, they're gonna do it again next year, so. The uh... We have a proposal that will be discussed in closed session on real estate on Progress Parkway for a use that may be inconsistent with the I-1 zone district, which is what that property is. I think we need to have a discussion about whether or not we want to rezone that to commercial in order to facilitate the kind of uses we anticipate, rather than having to deal with everybody coming in with a proposal to do something in an industrial zone district that's incompatible with his own district and then having to rezone it every time you want to consider something. That's not the discussion for tonight, but it's kind of, that's a work session topic probably. But uh... The, we had a ribbon cutting today at Harold's Famous Beet Company. If you have not been there, my eyes were opened as to the honey business, so I would recommend you go by there and check it out. It's uh... It's interesting. The uh... Received the call from a landlord regarding the location of a medical marijuana dispensary and what zone district that could go and what the regulations were and it would require a special use permit in a commercial zone district. That's what's being the area being proposed for it and it's all I know. We'll see if it, if it materializes. Piva, Mr. Piva was in town, we met. The title company sent me a notice today asking for a copy of the ordinance authorizing the sale, which we, which we have, so I think we're within days of probably closing next week. I can't get them the ordinance. We can get it to them tomorrow, but we won't close, I'm sure, till next week. And uh... Bob had called and asked a question about flood buyout procedures. And, you know, the city participated in flood buyout program after the nineteen ninety-three flood and it's a FEMA program that's designed to mitigate future claims for damages, eliminate them. What FEMA was experiencing was that there would be a flood, they would pay somebody to rehab their facility from the flood damage and then two years later there'd be a flood and they'd be right back in there paying for it again. The city has a flood damage prevention ordinance that prevents people from building new structures in flood-prone areas or rebuilding structures if they're damaged by more than fifty percent of their fair market value, so that we don't constantly have to deal with this flood damage. But in the flood buyout program, FEMA funds seventy-five percent of the acquisition cost and the city was picking up the twenty-five percent. The demolition was done by the city of the structure and the city had to agree to take ownership of the underlying real estate and pledge that it would not be reused for any purpose that might lead to future claims for damages, so it's pretty much parkland. We spend considerable amount of money every year, as you know, and Gary reports, you know, well, we were cutting and weed eating. Well, most, lots of what we cut is the FEMA buyout property that we have to take care of. So should somebody want to do a FEMA buyout today and it qualifies, FEMA would again pay for seventy-five percent of the cost. The city right now is not participating in the buyout program, so we wouldn't be paying for demolition. The person would just take seventy-five cents on the, you know, on the dollar. I'm not sure, and FEMA hasn't gotten back to me, how you then would handle demolition of that structure. But ultimately the city would have to own the property for guaranteeing it won't be developed again or... Yes?
Is all that stuff still in play now that we have a levy because that was all done prior to having a levy?
Yeah, and it isn't just the backwater of the Mississippi that floods, it's the headwater of the creeks. So we're protecting the flood plain totally. Now, the area that's behind the levy that would flood of the Mississippi is a different zone, hazard zone, under FEMA regulations. It's levy protected, but it isn't, and so, you know, if you were to get a loan from somebody to do something on property that's levy protected, you wouldn't necessarily have to have flood insurance as you would if you did something in a A-zone or, you know, the hundred-year probability flood zone, so.
And once it's bought out, you can't build on that again, period?
Can't put a street on it.
Right.
All it can do is plant trees, have a park. If we do, and anything you do requires approval of FEMA. So downtown St. Jen has talked about the Gage Park and doing something, raising money and doing something there. Whatever they choose to do, we'll have to send the plan in and get it approved before they could do it, so they want to make sure that nothing's going in there for which somebody might claim later damages. So they're, what they're talking about doing is putting up monuments and things that are not gonna hold water or be damaged by water.
So if the city is no longer participating, the homeowner is still responsible for the demolition? Is that correct?
That would be my conclusion. So you're gonna get seventy-five cents on the dollar and you have to tear down your structure.
And then we're responsible?
Well...
We get the...
I mean, a property owner now has a structure that needs to be demolished because it doesn't meet our standards. We could make them do it. Question is, if that property could be bought out by FEMA, who then would be responsible, once that happened, for removing the structure? And I don't think it would be the property owner at that point because they would have deeded the property to the city. So we might want to temper our participation, get some understanding of who's gonna do what before we enter into an agreement for some future buyout, but there won't be any kind of mass buyout. If it happens, it's gonna happen on an individual basis.
So we can refuse?
Yes.
Martin, back to the Chadwell Lane thing. I know that due to the bidding that we did and stuff, we couldn't, without rebidding the project, we couldn't widen that street, but I think it would be in the city's best interest if we could pursue some extra property along through there, either through donations or low-cost purchase. Possibly, I mean, we're both alongside that road now up there, I don't know why we don't own it, but at some point in the future
Well, you, you...
We're widening that road.
Yeah, well, okay. I mean, you recall the discussion
Right.
about rights of way versus easements and Dave Weber did the title work and determined that, for the most part, our right of way is the width of the road.
Right.
It doesn't go beyond that. Defining how much now becomes kind of an engineering question. And then we have to write deeds for, you know, acquiring the right of way by donation or whatever, but how much and where kind of requires you to decide how much you're gonna widen it and where you're gonna widen it, so that you can come up with a legal description of what you need in order to accommodate the construction.
And if you had, if you had one person that don't want to sell, you're you're widening, you're narrowing.
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't. If you can't get all of the easement, I mean, you...
Because you can't make them sell, right?
Well, you can.
Well, you could.
Many, most, most boards are loathe to condemn property if there's not a pressing public need for that.
What other average width?
On that road? Oh gee. Gary, you know? Twelve feet, fifteen, that's huge.
Average width?
It's not twenty.
A little less than twenty?
I measured it at fifteen.
Fifteen, sounds right, yeah.
In some places it's a little bit wider and a couple of curves, but in some places it's not quite fifteen.
I don't dispute the value of doing that. I mean, I and I think we just have to kind of...
I just think it's something we need to look at in the future. It doesn't have to be tied to this project. It's just something to look at in the future.
Maybe while we have Cochran working with us on Chadwell before the project's over, we can get him to come give us kind of a best guess on without surveying it, I mean, it you just don't know how much to acquire unless you're you have the design work in front of you.
Any more questions? Thank you all. Steve?
You guys noticed that we do water tower on Progress Parkway? The fence has been completed. This past week, we went ahead and finished putting a rock down underneath the tower and on the base of it.
The fenced-in area. Looks nice. If you guys have time, go up there and check it out. Thank you. A little bit later in the fall, we're gonna sew some grass in there, get the grass going a little thicker, keep the washouts out. Yeah, we're gonna fill it. The ruts are cut because there's no grass.
No, I mean, gravel placement doesn't look finished.
Oh, no, no, got a little cleaning up to do. Along with the tower, MicroCom was here last week as planned, or earlier last week and beginning of this week, installing the SCADA system on that tower. Before, we were having to go out there a few times a day, read the pressure gauges, go to point base, operate the pumps manually. Now we have it on the SCADA system, we can operate it from the water treatment plant, we can monitor the tower levels. We have it set up with a low-level alarm. If the tower was to ever get low, it would alarm us, it would kick a pump on automatically. It would guarantee the water pressure and service out there to the customers. So that was, that was a big addition.
And then what?
It'll call the...
It'll go to you?
It'll call me, it'll call the on-call phone, it'll call Cory. Pretty much lets everybody know. You want on the list?
Yeah.
All right. Buck's on it. Uh, let's see, the uh... We've been working with jokers on numerous streets, looking at manhole risers, valve box risers for the upcoming projects. All the materials are ordered, measurements are in. The uh... I did bring a guy in from our Cape Girardeau division that works with the GIS program. He took our equipment that was reading, I'd say nine-foot accuracy and the machine needed some updates. We had to contact Trimble, get the unit updated. We are now reading sub-centimeter again. So it's now instead of a showing on a map in an eighteen-foot circle, it's showing pinpoint accuracy where it's at. So good, good assistance there. You guys will notice the uh... sludge is being removed from the ponds down there at the waste, by the wastewater plant. Notice some heavy truck traffic on St. Mary's Road. That'll be going for about the next week.
I noticed that, the Saturn. Where are these trucks coming from?
Who's doing that?
MetroAg.
Who's been using that for years?
Yeah.
Steve, when you talked about a rate increase a while ago and stuff, I've had a question about, I failed to ask it and stuff. Were we talking about the same percentage increase for residential as commercial?
There is a different commercial rate, be like for high-volume users, that's a three percent increase.
Both on water answer?
Yeah.
Steve, you have a note on the water treatment plant that a transfer pump motor failed?
Yes.
How did that affect you?
Uh, we have, the water plant's built with redundancy. If one motor fails, normally there's two or three pumps that alternate. If one fails, the other two pick up slack and while we get the other one replaced.
Did you have to replace that completely?
Uh, it's out right now, it's being rebuilt.
Okay.
It's good. It was always an order, you run one until it quits and then you switch over to the other one in order to get then you get that effect, you alternate running and you increase the risk that they both go out at the same time.
We do, we do track the runtime hours on those pumps and over time they have kind of alternated failing on their own, for lack of, lack of better excuses, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Chief Bennett?
I don't think I have too much to report. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have any plans for extra officers on Eighth Street in the mornings?
For the...
If we have the quote?
Yes, for the, for the next couple of weeks.
Okay, you'll have somebody there?
We'll have somebody there in the morning and I've already talked to the school staff, they have a cross guard there, crossing guard now, but I told them we'll take the brunt of the, of the heat in the morning from people not being able to park. So, you know, obviously we'll have to get with Gary and schedule the signage installation and everything like that. So at that time, we'll, we'll have people there.
And are we, are we doing any other communication to relay this? That it's switching to one way?
The school has, has already notified all of their parents. I mean, it was, it was already communicated to them before that the preferred route was just Eighth Street, to drop off at Eighth Street. So my understanding is they're gonna follow up, follow up also with the parents that are gonna be affected by that. It'll primarily be school, parents and kids that will be affected by that, so they are supposed to communicate that also.
Yeah, I would think, because you have parents coming in from out of town, that's gonna have to be handled by the school. I would think their...
Oh, we can still put it on... I mean, yeah, we'll put it on...
Well, on Facebook, but there's a lot of...
I was mostly concerned that there was communication with the school so that they were helping us with that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Sandra turned in a report, she's not gonna be here tonight, so any questions you can ask Martin.
Right.
Martin knows.
Martin knows. Takes us down to public comments?
I'm Keith Skaggs, seven forty-nine, Marles Free.
I am the St. Genevieve County Fair Board President and also the chairman for the St. Genevieve Racing Series up at the fairgrounds. You all got one of our flyers. On October twelfth of this year, we're doing a Backstoppers race. We like for city officer, county and ambulance and all that to come up and help support Backstoppers. We went through all the red tape with Backstoppers, filled out the application, got it okay with Jason Shot and the Sheriff's Department. And we got okay with our flyer to get the process and we're on Missouri Association with Backstoppers, they're gonna advertise it. So basically what we're gonna do, we're gonna run our regular races throughout the night. Then we got two, we're gonna do different races with firefighters and paramedics and police officers come in and they'll be racing some of the two-twelve Predator car, flat carts that we got this year. It's a new class, it's grown real fat, a lot faster than I thought it would. We started four carts, now we got up to almost twenty carts in this class. So they're gonna be racing them, the cheaper carts, to be fixed over the winter if none of the drivers could drive as good as our regular racers. So they're donating their carts to the firefighters and police and paramedics and that. So I'm just looking, letting you guys know, we will be going over our normal time prior for this, just for the it's, we will be giving fifty percent of our profit for our night, or possibly more, as long as we pay our bills, our food bills and all that. Everything else will go to Backstoppers. We'll be cutting a check with Jason Shot, then he'll be taking it up to St. Louis to Backstoppers. I'm just asking you guys support on it.
So do I understand correctly that our police, fire, ambulance, first responders are gonna be in the carts racing?
Yes, yes. They will be covered under NIFAR insurance, our waivers and all that. We checked in all that and, you know, they're off-duty, so, you know, you know, if they get hurt, you know...
I think it's very nice of the owners of these
Yeah, it is.
Land racing machines to make them available.
We got two of the Aldermans that race. They, they know how much the carts are and, you know, the motors are only a hundred-dollar motor, a hundred-twenty-dollar motors. They blow them up, they gotta get new ones anyway over the winter, so. That's basically, well, only thing they could do is blow the motors up, over rev them or hit the wall and tear up fenders like Joey does. But otherwise, we're just looking forward to this event. We wanted to do it early in the year, it just didn't work out. Must have been a new track. The new track is doing wonderful and it's holding up for being all new track, new field. I am planning to work on the track over the winter and a little bit more. I know we had some complaints before about some dust and the noise. We're trying to get it as fast as we can. We're talking about moving the time up next year. And we've been water control, I put a pit in the center to help keep the dust down as much as we can. With Mother Nature, it's, the last race we raced, we watered, I think, for four nights in a row and it ended up getting a little dusty. We shut her down, watered it and moisture came up, so. Which I know we're in county fairgrounds, but I am surrounded by you guys and I want you guys to support. We bring a lot of people coming out of town. Casey's had to put another employee in, Donimals, always, we get pizza delivered up there. We bring a lot of revenue into our city, you know, gas stations and all that, so. But we just wanna keep this going, it's getting bigger. I just want to ask them for you guys to support on this race.
How many firefighters are there?
We're gonna, that's...
Have you had some sign up?
We have some sign up. Steve's gonna do it. Pollack, one of the city officers, is gonna be racing one of the carts, which we do got some firefighters coming out of Belleville, Illinois. They race up there, they're gonna come down and race and they got other carts that they, I don't know exactly how many, but more in the area. I mean, I will have planks for three or four classes if I have to. There is a gentleman that out Wolf Creek, Backstoppers, he's actually on the flyer, number sixty-nine there. He had an accident. He used to be the captain of Wolf Creek Fire Department. He races at our track, only has one leg, does excellent job, Backstoppers helped him. So, I mean, it's just, it's just trying to get some money for Backstoppers, because I mean, it's with officers getting hurt and, you know, firefighters and all that, the money is in good use, so.
How many carts need to race?
We usually run, depending on how many, last race was the two-twelve Predators, we had to have two heats. We had sixteen carts, so we went down and so we went down to semis to eliminate them. I'm trying to only keep ten carts on the track. You get more than that, it's a cluster and it gets beaten banging and it's all about safety too. Which I'm the main flagman. Most of you guys, I don't know if you guys know about racing. We got a black flag and I use it. I'm gonna be using it a lot more, because we're, you know, it's the safety of the drivers, so.
You said you think you'll go with them later that night?
We're gonna probably end up going a little later than what we usually do. We try to get out of there by ten, nine-thirty, ten. It depends. We probably won't have no lawnmowers. The lawnmowers is what we race, or the loudest what we have. They have a race, a championship race down in Patton, Missouri, this weekend. They race down there every opposite weekends we do. So they're racing this weekend because they're championship. They're the loudest ones of all of them. They, they got a hundred cc motors on them. If it comes down to it eventually, we gotta put silent mufflers on them. Right now we run headers. If we have to, we'll put mufflers, we'll mandatory mufflers. But, you know, I, so.
Do you have a certain, a certain time you're planning on?
I had to with Backstoppers, I said eleven o'clock, because they have to know. Backstoppers has to know what time I'm starting, what time I'm finishing. Because I put eleven o'clock, so, I mean, if we usually take a twenty-minute intermission, I see we're gonna be pushing it, intermission be out, we'll just go keep racing. They're getting, drivers are getting better at it. We're talking about a lot of kids too. Five-year-old kids race these, the bigger carts. So you're talking about trying to get a kid in this cart, get suited up, get his parents buckle him up for safety, because these flat carts, they don't have seat belts in them, harnesses and all that. They set in them, they're low-profile. They, they set in them, they're low profile, less likely to flip more than the, the cage carts, as you see with that 42, he's doing a willy around that track. That's a 200, that's a 450 cc cart. They're booking, there, we clock them 75 miles an hour around our track. The flat carts can do 30 miles, 39 miles an hour around our track. We clock them. So they're going, they're moving and we're trying to get them safety, you know, the kids, the older ones, the bigger carts, we gotta get the harnesses in, it might be delay, if we call them up, they ought to be in staging, but we're talking about five-year-old kids to 72-year-old men racing. So it's pretty interesting, you guys got time, come up and watch. Uh, we'll race them this Saturday and this will be our last race of the year and we'll be starting back up into March, so.
I would say more often than not to, uh, the races in general, like if, we may get out after 10 or so, but the races usually stop about, I would say 9:30.
9:30, 10:00, yeah. Right there. So, I mean, we, we can have the lights on, we're up till 11, but, you know, people's packing up and leaving. And we did change the pit location, used to we'll come out down there by the softball field, eliminated that, now they're coming out of the main entrance of the fairgrounds, trying to keep the dirt, the dust. If it's some reason it starts raining, I think there was an incident last year, at the beginning of the year when we had our track at the Demol Derby area, it got muddy, rainy, I told them guys, get up and get it gone, packed up, you know, the rain was coming and we just finished a rain, race and the rain came. Uh, just a couple of the fairboards went out there, some brooms swept off the mud off the road, you know, it's mud, hard. But we try to do what we can to keep the road clean, that's why I changed the pit location, the entrance, uh, instead of coming in by the softball field, we come off the top of the hill now. So, and it's, so it's a lot easier for them to get in and out, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Keith.
All right, if you have any questions, get a hold of Joey and.
Yeah. Any other public comments? All righty. Thank you very much. Takes us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to old business. Bill number 4308, this will be the second reading, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing a no parking restriction on both east and west side of South 10th Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Like to have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4308 now becomes ordinance number 4237.
Thank you. Bill number 4309, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget relating to the general fund budget, number 10, Department, number 16, Police.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4309 now becomes ordinance number 4238.
Thank you. Bill number 4310, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget relating to wastewater fund, budget number 31.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
And we have seven yes votes. Bill number 4310 now becomes ordinance number 4239.
Thank you. Bill number 4311, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget relating to the rural fire fund budget, number 60.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alder, Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
And Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4311 becomes ordinance number 4240.
Thank you. Bill number 4312, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget relating to the transportation trust fund, budget number 21.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4312 now becomes ordinance number 4241.
Thank you. Bill number 4313, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget relating to the downtown Tiff Fund, budget number 41.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4313 now becomes ordinance number 4242.
Thank you. Bill number 4314, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget relating to the federal levy fund, number 45, and capital improvement fund, number 70.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4314 now becomes ordinance number 4243.
Thank you. Bill number 4315, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget relating to the special roads fund, budget number 28.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4315 now becomes ordinance number 4244.
Thank you. Bill number 4316, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget relating to the debt service fund, budget number 50.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4316 now becomes ordinance number 4245.
Thank you. Bill number 4317, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2019 budget to record residual equity transition, transactions to remove old due-to slash forms.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4317 now becomes ordinance number 4246.
Thank you. Bill number 4318, an ordinance approving the budget for the City of St. Genevieve for fiscal year 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
No.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes, with the agreement that we're still going to, maybe working on it.
Alderman Wolfen?
No.
We have, okay, we have four yes votes, three no votes. Ordinance number, or bill number 4319 now becomes ordinance number 4248.
Thank you. Bill number 4319, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance deleting Chapter 100, General Provisions, Article 3, Penalty Section 100.280, imprisonment for failure to pay fine or cost of prosecution in its entirety.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4319 now becomes ordinance number 4248.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4320, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri restricting northbound traffic onto Eighth Street from Washington Street between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday, when, or when school is in session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a question about this. So this is going to be restricting the, the traffic heading towards the school? So this is going to allow people to come down towards Market, correct?
If I may, the, the issue is, the, the preferred method for dropping off kids is to come the length of Eighth Street, drop off the children at that bridge there, Eighth and Ridgeway. Other parents are circumventing that and coming up Washington and turning up that little short block of Eighth Street, which is causing issues for the buses getting out because there's a, a traffic delay down Washington Street. So this is just trying to eliminate people turning on to drop off kids at that bridge in the morning and backing truck, traffic up on, on Washington Street.
Okay.
Makes better backup by three, five minutes.
Yeah, the, the only reason I ask is because the couple of parents that I called me, uh, they were hoping it to be the other way around, basically. Traffic, no traffic coming down. Yes, no traffic coming down.
Coming down Eighth Street.
Yeah.
We, we had looked at that in the past, just as far as trying to make that a one-way in the past, if the residents on Ridgeway were not paying for it, uh, so we were at that time differently. So, I'll go to some, certainly that's something we can cut again.
Is, is this a, a situation that needs to be passed now or is there any way we can table it until it's looked at to see what might be the more viable option?
Well, regardless of, of southbound traffic from Eighth Street, this would still be an issue as far as the buses getting in because it's the traffic that's going northbound that's causing the issue. So I would prefer to just go ahead and get past tonight and then we can look at that other option to solve that other problem.
Okay.
But this will solve the problem as a hand.
Yeah, okay. Like I said, they're just, actually their complaint was on the buses. I, I discussed that with you, uh, was, they're like, well, is there any way you can call and ask if we can get buses from not coming down Eighth? Well, let's see what I can do. But, um, I have no, I have no dog in the fight, but I'm just trying to, to bring up questions that were brought up to me.
Oh, I'm pretty anal.
At one time there were, there was one bus that went down Eighth Street, it was the, uh, special needs bus. I don't know if that's still the case.
I don't think.
The, the other buses go up to Ninth Street.
Yeah, I don't, I think they're only going down there if the traffic's already cleared.
Yeah, they, the, the school, as, as far as after school, puts out barricades and cones to eliminate traffic going down Eighth Street from Washington to Market, well, really Market, Washington to Jefferson.
Right.
Uh, but it doesn't, it doesn't prevent bus traffic going between Washington and Ridgeway. But again, I don't know if there's any buses that circle that because they don't, they don't drop off within a mile of school, pick up or drop off within a mile from school. So, so even, even changing that, I don't know what, what's all this is.
Okay. Now it's public, so I ask my questions.
So I do have a first and a second, so I will need a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4320 now becomes ordinance number 4249.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4321, an ordinance approving the purchase of a 2019 tractor, ramjet trailer, mounted sewer jet, jetter from COE Equipment Rochester, Illinois, in the amount not to exceed $58,717.86.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Bill number 4321 now becomes ordinance number 4250.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, we have two bills, 4322 and 4323, they're, have to make a decision on which one of these we want to, it's too different, it's on the auditing services and we need to decide which one of them we want to go with.
42 for any confusion, 4323 is our recommendation.
Yes.
And I'd like, that's why I asked if we can vote on our recommendation first.
Jimmy?
I'd like to address the, to the mayor and the board. In August, I received an email from Mr. Tomlin that the city had received two bids to audit the city from 2019 through 2023. Brian Wolfen was also assigned to evaluate the two bids and recommend, make a recommendation to the Board of Audit. We met with Martin and Sue in a conference room where we reviewed both proposals. Sue said she had a good relationship with the current auditors. She said they were good to work with, and they were always available to answer any questions. Brian asked Sue how many times she talked the auditors, and to my recollection, she replied two or three times a year. Here's some of my questions to Martin that I had on the previous audit. Page thirty-four, paragraph J from the previous audit, says the city builds and collects its own property tax. I asked if that statement was true. Martin said, no. The city turned collection of property taxes to the city in two thousand seventeen to the county. Page fifty-one, paragraph eleven. The water and sewer fund have loaned cash to the Valley Springs Tiff to pay for projects that were, will be reimbursed at a later date. I asked Martin if that was legal, his answer was yes and no. My response was, I don't like yes and no answers. Paragraph fifty-three, paragraph sixteen, Valley Springs Tiff has a deficit balance of eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Valley Springs Tiff ended in two thousand and sixteen. Why is there still a deficit three years later? City has had the same auditor for twenty years. Brian and I felt the need for a change, there were seemingly too many negligent mistakes. Another minor example is on the date of the proposal from your existing, they list the years from two thousand nineteen to two thousand and thirteen. I called Martin at the last meeting and asked why we didn't vote on our recommendation. His response was, because nobody had given a motion in a second. This was just a committee report. I don't think anybody would agree. Why wouldn't Brian or I motion for approval in this scenario? I'd never heard that, or seen a committee report handled like this before. We were tasked with the evaluation of the two bid proposals. We did this to the best of our ability, and with the guidance of the St. Genevieve Code Book, we came to our recommendations. I don't know how many times, Martin, in the last ten years, you've awarded a contract to anyone other than the lowest bidder. If the necessity of unlimited phone calls and consulting were necessary, then they should have been included in the bid proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
So, my understanding that it's a two thousand dollar difference over the five-year period?
That's correct.
If we don't accept the low bid, are we setting ourselves up for?
No, this is a professional services contract, so it's the lowest and best bid. So, I mean, with that, that kind of statistical difference between the two, you're not gonna let it rest, but it's sort of, we can show on the computer, I guess, if that's successful to. You just have to make a decision which one you all think is best.
Well, I make a motion, we accept bill number forty-three twenty-three.
I'll second with no, if there's no further discussion.
So, we have to read it first?
Yeah.
Have we get there yet?
Well, sorry.
No, we, yeah, is, is that the, that's just, is that the bill that what the board wants to go with? Is that, is that the, the firm you guys want to use? You set these two bid out for a task, they did their job, but it's still, you know, it's still the decision of the board. Is there any further discussion on that?
I mean, if we're gonna put it out for bid, um, it seems like we should go with a better price. I mean, they both seem to be, I read the bids, they both seem to be reputable firms that are engaged in this type of business. I know we have relationships and stuff, but I've been through audits before and dealt with auditors. I, I mean, I don't think we have anything to hide. I think we're open and, and fair, but I, two thousand dollars is two thousand dollars.
I thought we were the whole five years?
Yes, sir.
But, I think we should have been a little more, like Jimmy had said, we should have spelled out some things in there about, you know, number of calls, and, I mean, in both of the proposals, they have the opportunity to charge us extra at a rate we agree on at the time that it's deemed necessary.
So, does this lock us in for the five years? Or do we, is there a provision that we opt out after, say, we don't, there's some issues that we have, and can we opt out after a year? In the event that we're finding stuff that is unacceptable?
Well, if they, if they don't meet up to their professional responsibilities, we're not, yeah, but there's no provision in the agreements to cancel it without cause.
Right.
And why does it have to be five years? Is that our choice?
That's what we put out there.
I mean, does that get us a better price, or does it, what?
Without putting it out for a lower number of years, I, I can't say.
I'm just wondering where those five-year number keeps coming up.
Because that's historically periods that you've done your accounting contracts. Would you like to go back to that?
Well, I thought we got a first and a second.
He's got to read first.
We're waiting for it to be read. Yeah.
So, no further discussion?
No further discussion.
Well, you can have a discussion after a first and a second.
Yes.
Okay. Right.
I don't know that. If you don't have anything to discuss, you should act on the motion.
Bill number forty-three twenty-three. An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for auditing services from Hostchild Bloom and Company LLP, Certified Public Accountants of Washington, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Takes us to bill number forty-three twenty-four, an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, to modify the initial